Green the first minute and a half and then turn yellow indicating you have thirty seconds remaining to wrap up your comments and at two minutes the light will turn red indicate that your time is up. So we'll start our public comment tonight. We start with Nora Anaya followed by Jane Peria followed by Earl Michelin and if your name's called if you'd come and sit down in the front row right there as you're waiting to speak and so Jane Peria, Earl Michelin if you'll make your way down and our first speaker is Nora Anaya. Welcome.
Yes, Mr. Consul, Mr. President and Consul, I am here again and I have a few things I'd like to say. I thank you for allowing us to come in and speak. One of the things I would definitely thank you for the last time I was here, I'd like to keep the option open of a town hall meeting and I know I'd like to know who I would contact for that. I also like to let you know that the POC needs to be dissolved, that's just my opinion. What I am also liking to tell you is that we just came down from the mayor's office, about twenty of us with Vicinos United and we had us sit in at the mayor's office just to be able to get some conversation and we believe that the mayor is going to be gracious enough to allow us to have some conversation about what is going on with the police brutality. I also like to let you know that we were very fortunate to be invited to the Martin Luther King Parade and we were able to go into the parade and march and get to the city Civic Plaza and let the people there know that we are still working at trying to unite our, all the people that have been, the families that have been brutalized and go into the council meeting or the town hall meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Anaya.
Thank you very much.
Jane Peria followed by Earl Michelin.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gargantio. Ms. Anaya.
Ms. Anaya, you asked a question I'm not sure anybody was ready to answer and that is what do you need to do, what do you need to contact for a town hall meeting? I'd be glad to be one of the contacts, I don't have to be the only person, but I'd be glad to see what can be done, what the thoughts are on the part of yourself or anybody else for having a town house meeting and finding a venue where that town house meeting can happen so you can contact my office.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Jane Peria.
Hi, councilpeople, I have a sore throat, I'm sorry, but my name is Jane Peria and I'm here for the ladies of the West Mesa. My daughter was the youngest one, I just wish that something else would have happened, you know, they would have, they would have been more forward with us and talked to us more because they just found him out there and just like, they just threw him out there like if they were dogs, they're not dogs, you know what I mean? They're somebody's members, family members and stuff and all I'm requesting is for Mayor Berry is to talk to the family, you know, and to let us know that he, that he can comfort us and we can go to him whenever we need to talk to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Earl Michelin followed by Pat Toledo followed by Eli Chavez.
Council President and Members, greetings. First, the POC is a farce. The panel let one man speak for all of them. At the January tenth, two thousand thirteen meeting, Mr. Shine presented a theory that our grandson was shot three times in the back and wanted to be shot by cops so he could commit suicide by cop and the panel ran with a theory and declared the shooting justified on a theory that was never mentioned before. What a travesty. The POC needs to be dismantled and started over with new members. If Jacob wanted to commit suicide by cop, why didn't he pull his gun after being stopped? Because he never did point his gun at the human waste disposal and he sure would not point an unloaded gun at anyone and why was Jacob's blood on the barrel and not on the grip, on the butt? Because he was handing the gun by the barrel to the human waste disposal. They did not say that, they will not admit it. Mr. Shine should be ashamed of himself as should Ken Sanchez for appointing Shine to this committee. I had more faith in Mr. Sanchez than put a lawyer on this supposedly citizen review panel to check police actions for justifications of wrongdoing. Mr. Shine presented a theory, no facts and lies to justify the murder of our grandson condoned by Mr. Schultz. The OMI closing statement states it was a homicide by court and the court records show Jacob Michelin had no criminal record or felony record. Copies are available if they had bothered to check. Ms. Hammer bothered to check the, had Ms. Hammer bothered to check the OMI report herself, she declared that Jacob was over the legal limit for DUI. She would have found that that was not true either. There were small amounts of alcohol and marijuana, another lie, waste of taxpayer money. Ms. Hammer also stated Jacob was pointing a gun at the waste disposal and that is another lie. Should read the OMI report before they give their answers.
Thank you, Mr. Michelin. Pat Toledo followed by Eli Chavez then Ken Ellis.
President, City Council, my name is Pat Toledo from the Summit Neighborhood. A groundbreaking event happened ten days ago, for the first time in history, a permit for fuel by a multi-billion dollar gas station, Smith's was revoked by the air quality board by a vote of four in favor revoking, two against and one abstention. The board members not only revoked Smith's permit but reiterated our concerns with the air quality and ultimately said this gas station is unsafe, not healthy and should be shut down. Our counselor at the time of the inception of this gas station, Isaac Benton, who is an architect and knew of the many numerous violations and illegalities of this station at the very beginning and was aware of the questions and complaints before it was built, did little to help out our neighborhood and at our neighborhood meeting at ten eight two thousand ten said no dialogue about Smith's was permitted because it's here and that's the way it is. In the end, he co-sponsored a bill to never let this disaster happen again, but we are stuck with this station that the air quality board, a neutral Albuquerque board made up of doctors and engineers, agreed with us that this station shouldn't be here and furthermore that the mayor, Barry, and all city agencies responsible, including the city council, need to address this and investigate the other fourteen Smith's gas stations that were permitted at the time to see if the same hanky panky went on. We want this station closed. This station is having a horrific health and economic and safety effect on our neighborhood. We need to breathe, close down this station. Also, you were given a updated traffic study that was just completed that again shows four years later that this station should never have been built and that there are numerous violations and that it shouldn't even be there. We need you guys to finally back it up and say, close this station down and that's that.
Counselor Benton, you want to address that?
Yeah, I don't have a question for the speaker, but I want to reject his contention that I said anything to the, to the effect that no dialogue was permitted because it was a done deal. That was never the case and those of you who recall any discussion that has occurred with regard to this and those who have followed the issue know that this station and Counselor Jones and I worked on amendments to the zoning code trying to prevent problems like this in the future and it is a problem, the station is a problem and I applaud the air quality board for speaking out in the way they did and I've worked continuously to try to alleviate the problems at that station, but prior to the approval of that station from a zoning standpoint, there was absolutely nothing that I could have done as a city counselor to prevent the issuance of a zoning approval for that station. There was previously a gas station at that location and it was zoned for such, so I want to make very clear to anyone who's watching or listening that we've done all we can to alleviate the nuisance which I agree has been detrimental, but that at the time prior to its approval from a zoning, for a building permit through zoning, there was nothing we could have done at that time.
Counselor Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Mr. Torek if he's here regarding the same issue and I'm a little bit concerned also because the property owner next to that station, it is a problem, Counselor Benton, it's a serious problem and I know that basically the property next to that station, I think it belongs to Andy Carrasco, basically they've been landlocked by some of the work that the city's done because of the problems with the trucks and I think it's become a problem for him that he cannot fill that building with any tenants and it's vacant right now and I'm not sure what's going on there, but I know you said you couldn't discuss it before because the air quality board had not basically rendered a decision. Well, that decision now has been rendered. Can you work with Mr. Carrasco and that property owner to try to alleviate some of the problems that they are confronting because of this gas station? I mean, basically they put the barriers up where you can't enter his property. They basically have landlocked him out.
Mr. President, Counselor Sanchez, I'd like to talk to you about that. This isn't the final ruling, it's not the final disposition, the air quality or the air county, city county air board, there are other stages.
How many more stages are left?
There's a direct appeal to the Court of Appeals, you could file a motion to reconsider and eventually would end up in the Supreme Court, but in terms of what happened at that board, it was, and I think a lot of people who read the findings of fact, they adopted the findings of fact, they accepted the findings of fact, which said that there was no, that the issues with regard to Smith's were a result, I believe in seventy, I want to say seventy thousand dollars or so fine, but that, that they went contrary, that board went contrary by the definition, and this is my opinion, that was contrary and it was arbitrary and capricious and that in my opinion, when Sutton attorneys which are representing Smith's appeal that, which they will, to the Court of Appeals, which is a direct appeal, it's not going to the district court, it'll be reversed.
That's your position, but it still has not gone to the Court of Appeals for a judge to render that decision. This is a legal opinion.
Correct, but there hasn't been a final order and that'll be adopted. There were, the ruling occurred at the last board meeting, there'll be a final adoption of that order and then that'll be ripe for there to be an appeal. It's not ripe yet.
Okay, thank you.
Still on public comment, our next speaker is Eli Chavez followed by Ken Ellis then Don Schrader.
Mr. President.
Just one moment, Mr. Chavez, Counselor Harris.
And I'd just like to say one thing, that sometimes constituents, people watching on TV think that counselors have the ability to control what happens on land and really we don't. If there was a permit for a gas station, then whoever purchased that land probably has a constitutional right to use that land as a gas station unless they're doing something wrong. So I just want to clear that if people might be watching that city counselors, we have to respect the property rights of the land in our district.
Mr. Chavez.
Good evening, sir, and council members. I came here to, and I expected that we would have a comment prior to the nomination of Mr. Barker, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Foster. You just approved two former APD officers to the POC board.
Mr. Chavez, just to clarify, what we did was we put that, that decision tonight on the, on the agenda for final action, so we've not, just so anybody's listening, I want to make sure that.
I missed that.
There's not been final action, but go ahead and proceed.
And I apologize for that.
No, no problem, go ahead and proceed.
But there's no final action, this is what I recommend. None of these people that you guys nominated, Mr. Harris nominated a sharpshooter from, from the NRA to the board and the others were nominated to this board. If we're going to do that, I would like to see regular civilian people be on the board and we're tired of APD taking care of, of the board taking care of APD. This is not for APD. This is for the people on the west side of Albuquerque, the east side, northeast and everybody. Why don't we just abolish the whole POC and not a rubber, and then we won't have a rubber stamp. Use a template from New York City which is a fabulous thing where civilians are on board. I can't get on that board because I'm a retired federal agent, DEA. There's a little prejudice there. I love police officers, but they have to stand up and not do what they're doing. I don't know how much time, I got nine seconds, time flies by so fast. I want to thank you, if you have any questions, I, don't put these guys on the board, get some civilians. We don't need any more rubber stamps.
Mr. Ellis and then Don Schrader and Evan Rohar.
Mr. President, I'm going to talk about my appointment, perhaps I should do that later another time. I just, this person I nominate is highly qualified, but we'll talk about that later at the appropriate time.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, proceed.
I'd like to just pick up where Mr. Michelin left off on his prepared statement. It says right here, Ms. Hammer also stated Jacob was pointing a gun at the human waste disposal and that is another lie. Read the OMI report, it states Jacob was shot in the back three times and it was declared a homicide, a murder. When are you going to fire Schultz, Hammer and Shine and get someone here who knows the difference between a lie and a truth? This action needs to be done now to protect our citizens. Schultz has two civil rights convictions that he has not been punished for. He should have been decertified and served some punishment. Why is he not held accountable for his actions when we citizens are? Please get someone on the POC commission that will listen to facts and not theory and some honest people in leadership positions. Mr. Shine lied, Hammer lied and we all know by now Schultz continues to lie. The bottom line is, is that we have a police department that's covering up for the officers that are, you know, that are committing these crimes and the corruption is clear to the core. We have to, we have to start at the root of the problem and thank God DOJ's here because they're going to do exactly that and I'm really appalled that they picked up the same old, you know, snafu scenario where they're just continuing on with the justifying of these shootings at the POC meeting. I can't believe that we actually allowed the Police Oversight Commission to review a police shooting and to find, to accept findings of a bogus report on Mr. Michelin's grandson. I mean, what they're telling you and what's actually happening is lies. You know, they presented lies about my son's case, they presented lies about all of our loved ones' cases, they're not being, their ethics are out the window, they've lost their moral compass. You know, I have a lot of respect for law enforcement, but this, this APD here, you know, it's a shame that, you know, I've talked to a lot of officers and they said Chief Schultz used to be, have ethics and honor and integrity and he lost that and we just need to get that back in our police department, we need our police department and our community to be one, not, not against each other. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next speaker will be Don Schrader.
Listen to the words of Prophet Martin Luther King Jr. "Our economy must become more person-centered than property-centered and profit-centered. The evils of capitalism are as real as the evils of racism. What is wrong in the world today is that the nations of this world are engaged in a bitter colossal contest of supremacy. I'm sad to say that the nation in which we live is the supreme culprit and I'm going to continue to say it to America because I love this country too much to see the drift it has taken. God didn't call America to engage in a senseless unjust war as the war in Vietnam and we're criminals in that war. I could never again raise my voice against the violence of the oppressed in the ghettos without having first spoken clearly to the greatest purveyor of violence in the world today, my own government. We're called to speak for the weak, for the voiceless, for victims of our nation and for those it calls enemy. What do they think as we test our latest weapons on them just as the Germans tested out new tortures in the concentration camps of Europe? This business of burning human beings with napalm, of filling our nation's homes with orphans and widows, of sending men home from dark and bloody battlefields physically handicapped and psychologically deranged cannot be reconciled with wisdom, justice and love."
Mr. Rohar followed by Andres Valdez.
My last name's Rohr. We just went up to the mayor's office to discuss the ineffectiveness of the POC. This group has been trying, this group back here, has been trying to meet with the mayor for three months now. It went down in October and I wasn't there yet, but here I am now. They received no answer and certainly no appointment. We're going to keep moving on the mayor until he meets with us and with citizens whose relatives have been killed by APD. Two of the mayor's aides told us that it's not really the mayor who has purview over the POC, he said to go talk to the council, so here we are. According to the mayor, you are the only ones that can do anything about this corrupt process, so I'll ask, what specifically are you personally doing to protect the citizens of the city from its rogue police force? Now, my buddy Don just read one of the greatest speeches ever written by one of the greatest orators of the twentieth century and he was known, Dr. King of course was known for being a civil rights leader and a human rights advocate and one of the greatest. And I want to also ask you all that are making appointments, what are the civil rights credentials of the people that you're appointing? They should have a rap sheet, a civil rights rap sheet, it's five pages long if they're going to sit on the POC. So I just, I really suggest that those of you who aren't doing anything about the ineffectiveness of the POC, get up and do something about it because this is a powder keg issue. This city will have civil unrest if something is not done to curtail this issue. It's a foregone conclusion and you don't want that black mark on your, I'm sorry, you don't want that ugly mark on your, on your fair city, thank you, on our fair city.
Andres Valdez followed by Joe Sabatini and then Simon Polakowski.
Mr. President, Counselors, Andres Valdez with Vicinos United. Today, in commemoration of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, we had a sit-in at the mayor's office to get a response about how he sees human and civil rights. The mayor has been silent too long about the problems with, with Chief Raymond Schultz and the Police Oversight Commission. The silence of the mayor is no longer an option. Why did he, why did he hire Raymond Schultz as chief in the first place after the chief was found guilty or liable of violating Sam Costales's civil rights? Why did Raymond Schultz defend police that went to the location of the death of Tara Chavez outside of Albuquerque and destroyed all of the evidence? What kind of message is the mayor sending by supporting the chief over, over such matters as these? Regarding the Police Oversight Commission, all the members of the Police Oversight Commission support law enforcement and have no concern for human and civil rights. At this point, we request the city council not to appoint any new members to the Police Oversight Commission, but merely to consider disbanding the Police Oversight Commission until, until it gets fixed. They've lost all credibility, even the Albuquerque Journal, I'm sure y'all seen, seen that, did an editorial on how the commission has lost its credibility. The chair, who is also with the Fraternal Order of Police, threw me out of a meeting, the Police Oversight Commission meeting that is, me and violated all of my constitutional rights and all of the constitutional rights of the public commenters. Bambi Folk calls for the censure of Richard Shine, shine, an emergency meeting is called to remove the censure and Commissioner Bob Francis resigns.
Joe Sabatini followed by Simon Polakowski and then our last speaker, Mike Gomez.
Mr. President, Counselors, I'm Joe Sabatini and I'm speaking two issues on your agenda briefly. I'm the Secretary of the Near North Valley Neighborhood Association and on the Steering Committee for the Sector Development Plan that's before you tonight and I want to appreciate that that plan is now moving forward, although it's sponsored by Counselor O'Malley and Counselor Benton, the work actually began under Counselor Giego back in two thousand four and so we were interrupted by the fourth, the North Fourth Street Corridor redevelopment plan and now we're resuming it and are glad to be able to address the issues, significant issues in this unique historical area like the auxiliary dwelling units like walkability, preserving ditches in the rural, the trails in the rural aspect of the area and rezoning or addressing the problem of zoning for residences that were arbitrarily zoned in manufacturing because they were next to the railroad in nineteen fifty-nine. So we're glad for this effort to go forth. The second thing I wanted to speak to was R twelve one fifteen, I'm a former librarian and on the library board. Thank you, Counselor Sanchez, for continuing your efforts to get a full-service library finally for the southwest Mesa area and we are going up to the legislature to, to advocate for state, additional state funding to supplement the city funding that exists and that you are working on. So the library system has struggled and they'll, they'll get, we appreciate your help, thank you.
Simon Polakowski and then Mike Gomez.
Council President, Counselors, the Harlem Globetrotters come to town and they juggle a basketball and they get paid. U-Public comes to town, they get paid and they claim they juggle, well, we don't know where. They do it behind closed doors with this administration. They came in front of this council, they said that they were going to put on shows on Channel twenty-seven, I'm a former producer at Channel twenty-seven, it was operated by quote unquote, the educational channel, still dark, very few shows on Channel twenty-seven as of yet before when it was operated by quote unquote, there were sports events on one of the, I believe, Channel twenty-six. Again, this was all done, this contract negotiation between the administration, U-Public, all done behind closed doors. This administration believes that nothing should be in the public eye. Counselors voted on this, they were against experience, they didn't want anything controversial, they wanted something new and they got nothing. Where do you get in line to get paid to do nothing? The Globetrotters put on a real show, these people put on nothing. It should be called, instead of U-Public, we censor. I think this is all about freedom of speech when quote unquote ran Channel twenty-seven, anybody and everybody regardless of religion, political affiliation could become a producer at Channel twenty-seven, put a program on and speak their mind and this was okay, nobody was censored. All of a sudden, U-Public comes to town, there's nothing and they're getting paid. Wow, where do I get in line? This administration came out and said we have to tighten our belts because there's less money coming into the city and you're getting nothing out of this. Well, the mayor's a former government contractor, maybe this is the kind of contractor he was when he was doing contracting. You know, I'm, I still wonder what he did while he was a contractor, I'm very suspicious. Anyways, I was going to talk about the police, about the disappearance of the West Side women, in New York they have the same problem and they believe that whoever is responsible for the killings in New York has a good understanding of law enforcement procedure or is a law enforcement officer. Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, you're our last speaker.
Hello, Counselors. Here we are again. As you can see, you know, we get more people, a little bit more each time, you know, so there are people that are concerned. there are people that are concerned. The Journal's concerned about the POC, they said that their clown show, that, you know, this Bambi Folk says, "Censor him, censor him," and then for 20 minutes, they try to find the definition of this and censor, you know? And that's a disgrace. All you folks should really consider getting rid of the POC. The mayor's passing the buck down to you. Now it's up to you. Okay, there's six Republicans here, all right? And just do the right things. Cross some party lines, Ms. Jones, cross some party lines for a change, okay? Do the right thing and dissolve the POC. Don't appoint anybody else, all right? It's not going to do any good. Anyway, the POC process, it doesn't matter who you appoint, you could appoint all Democrats and Paul, and they can just, they can say everything was wrong that the cop did, and guess who goes to? Mr. Smiley up there, Chief Schultz, and he's just going to say, "Nope, it's my way anyway." So what's the use of even having them? You know, read the rules. You guys know, you all know, that it all comes down to him up there anyway. So what's the use of even having them? It's just all like a, it's just a front. It's just a political front to make everybody think that people care. Well, show people that you care, all right? Do something, dissolve the POC, all right? Just do it. It's not going to take that much. Just do it, and they don't do any good anyway, because I can tell you, they're like a repeat, like a television show that's a repeat every week except with a different star. That's it. I can, I can tell you exactly what they're going to do, exactly what Lieutenant Miller's going to say, exactly what Linda Martinez is going to do, exactly what Bambi Folk's going to do. You know, it's, I've been watching it for almost two years. It's a joke.
We move to announcements. Councilor Sanchez.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. There will be an Albuquerque-Bernario County Water Utility Authority meeting on Wednesday, January 30th, at 5:00 PM in the Vincent E. Griege chambers.
And Councilor Benton.
There will be an Albuquerque-Bernario County Government Commission meeting on Thursday, January 31st, at 4:00 PM, also in these chambers.
We go to the consent agenda, item 11. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? Councilor Sanchez first, and Councilor Benton.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Councilor Benton.
I'd like to ask that item B, the mayor's appointment of William Barker to the Police Oversight Commission, be pulled, and I would like to request that this be considered along with items B and C under approvals.
Okay, so that'll come off the consent agenda and we'll...
I was actually going to...
Mr. Harris.
And I apologize, Mr. President, for speaking a little out of order, but I guess it's okay. I was just thinking, we shouldn't do it any differently than we always do when something comes off the consent agenda, which is we address it right away. So I guess in that regard, I'd just like to address it right away. And that's why I specifically requested that this be considered along with the other two items. I think they're all similar. But approvals are after public hearings, so I'd just like to address it right after the, we approve the consent agenda without these matters on it, that's all.
I think that would be the point, that I think Councilor Benton is...
Okay.
Said that we would deal with it later with approvals, and everyone's okay with that, we'll go ahead and do that.
Mr. President.
Councilor Gardino.
The only difference I would have is that I would like to move approvals ahead of the public hearing, in case public hearing takes an inordinate amount of time, then we could deal with those three issues.
Yeah, I'd like to, if we're going to move something off the consent agenda, I'd like to just deal with it as soon as we pass the consent agenda without that, those items on it.
We have an opinion from our staff here, the best way to handle that.
Mr. President, I just wanted to remind you all that the public hearing in this case is not a full public hearing, it's just the adoption of findings and direction to the EPC. So you might want to take that into consideration before you decide what order. You can do it, you can either hear the EC appointment right at the, after the end of voting on consent agenda, or you can move it down to approvals and hear it with the other two, or you can move approvals up after, after the consent agenda.
Let's move it down to approvals and hear it with the other two, and we'll go ahead and, as planned, with the public hearing. We don't believe that will last, last too long. So we're still on the consent agenda. Councilor Sanchez, move approval of the consent agenda. Motion and a second. Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Motion passes, and we go to public hearings. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. President, councilors, at the last council meeting, the city council heard AC-1218, which had to do with a subdivision and a zone change. At that time, the council approved the zone change, but said that the site plan for subdivision should be remanded to the EPC to be heard together with a site plan for building permit for the same property, so that the neighbors would know exactly what was being planned for this property. In order to clarify for the EPC what they were being directed to hear, the proposed order of remand has been drafted, it can be amended by the council or adopted as is, and what it does, I think, or what I tried to do, was to put in the proposed orders, the specific request that was made, or the specific direction that was being made by the council at the last council meeting. This was strictly a way of making sure that the EPC knew what they were supposed to do on remand.
Councilor Benton.
I move that we adopt the findings as drafted by Mr. Thompson. A second.
Motion, a second, to adopt the findings as written, the discussion. Is it a motion and a second? Those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. We'll go to approvals and, and back to the item that came off the consent agenda, which was item B, EC-13313. Councilor Benton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no specific concern about this appointment any more than the others. I did note, however, in looking at this item, along with the other two, that all three of the individuals appointed, and I know we're, you know, in terms of decorum, we don't usually question each other's appointments, and, and so my apologies in advance of that, but I noted that all three of the appointees seem to be connected with a past in the military. And I don't want anybody to get the wrong idea about that either. However, that's, that stood out for me. What our police department and our public safety officers do in the city of Albuquerque is quite distinct from, from what the military does. And I'm also, it pains me to say this, but I'm also thinking about some of the public testimony we've had and some of the items that have come out in the news with regard to the POC. And when we were considering the last report, I'm, I can't remember the name of the company that did the last report, but we had a council study session about it, and there were some changes made to the report after we questioned some of its findings. And we had a lot of discussion up here on the dais about, yes, does the POC ordinance need revision, you know? Are we ready to tackle that? Are we prepared to fine-tune it, if that's all it is, or greatly revamp it, if that's what's needed? And that hasn't transpired. I take my own share of the blame for not taking the bull by the horns, but, but others up here said that we needed to do something about it, and we have not. And I am concerned that we continue to make appointments. I've got a vacancy right now in District 3. I'm having a very hard time finding interested individuals to serve. I can't help but think that some of the media attention is affecting my ability to fill that position. I, you know, I've got one apparently, seemingly good candidate, but I'm supposed to send up two. What do I do? You know? I think we're all, you know, going to be faced with, with challenges with this regard. I don't know if any of you who just made these appointments were able to find two, but I've had a very difficult time with that. But, but it concerns me, you know, I wonder whether I want to just move for deferral of all three of these appointments. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yeah, just a moment. Councilor Jones, I, and I guess I'd like to comment on, you know, what Councilor Benton said, which I think is very true, because this is, this is our doing. I mean, this, this commission was, was set up by this council, and this certainly is our responsibility in every way. And we do have some options, we have some options, I think, to take some steps that have been recommended, some, you know, some steps recommended by an independent, you know, source that, that we clearly have discussed and talked about, so I think we do need to take some action on that. Councilor Harrison, I do have a, really a draft bill, and the intention was to, to try to do that. And I think the hesitation that I have on it is it just, I'm not sure if it does enough, and I'm not sure if it would be seen as, as, you know, maybe just saying we're doing something and not really doing anything about it. And so, you know, we could take some steps, we could try to implement some of the, some of the recommendations, we could, we can entirely revamp this, and certainly there are some other, other models of revamping that, and we could disband that. And I got to tell you that I'm not completely opposed to, to disbanding this commission right now, because I, you know, I have a hard time with, with proceeding and business as usual when we know something has some serious challenges and problems with it. And so, you know, for me, I'm open to these things, certainly willing to work, you know, with you, Councilor Benton, and others, and Councilor Harrison and others, that would at least maybe take some steps that we can implement, and maybe take a look at the, the draft that we have to see if we could take that any further here. Councilor, Councilor Jones, and then Councilor Gardino.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to point out that the person who I have, the mayor has sent down that is an appointment for my district, we did have two people who were willing to serve. This gentleman has, has not been in the military. He, in fact, served as a private contractor, as a manager of curriculum development and evaluation at Kirtland, for Department of Energy at Kirtland Air Force Base. So he is not a military person in any way. He is an academician. He has, has a doctor of education. He has taught at, was deputy chancellor at New Mexico Tech in Socorro. He has taught at, he's now adjunct professor at New Mexico Highlands. He's taught at the University of Arizona. So we're talking about an academic and not a military person here, just to set the record straight.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. No doubt, and I certainly don't want to, in any way, be critical of these, these appointees. I thank everyone who made these, these appointments. You know, we do this with the best we can with the people that are willing, and we certainly do all we can to vet them and their citizens that have a desire to serve. You know, my, my appointee who served for three years will come off in 2013, and I, and I'm concerned. I'm also concerned about the ability to be able to, you know, find someone who's, who would be qualified, who'd be able to give, you know, really, you know, a fair shot to what the purpose of the POC is about, and then would be willing to serve in that way. But, you know, certainly, you know, and we have to, you know, believe that, you know, the people that we put forward here are people that are willing and that they are, are qualified and they have a desire to, to serve in this way. And so this is, this is difficult, but again, it goes back to the root issue on, on really dealing with the heart of the matter, and that is this, this entire POC is our responsibility, and I think we need to really look at what changes need to take place. And so, you know, to Councilor Gardino first, and then Councilor Harrison, then Councilor Winter.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. And I concur with a lot of what Councilor Benton mentioned. Certainly, the message we want to send out is that we're not appointing folks who have had that history, that bent, if you will, of being military or past police personnel. I think that's the wrong message to send. This is a citizen board, and to do that is really negating the ability for citizens to be part of that commission. That said, I wanted to thank the appointee that represents District 6 right now. Reverend Cameron has been an outstanding person. I think he brings forward the kinds of things that I would like to see on the commission, and certainly has the compassion and also the background, if you will, as a social worker reverend who deals with a lot of these issues on a personal level, if you will, meaning that he shepherds a large area of town at Emmanuel Presbyterian. The one thing that I do not want to do is disband the commission. I think that is playing into the hands of those folks who would like to have that completely undone, and then we have nothing left to work with, if you will. Now, do we have to revamp it? Obviously, because we have testimonials every single meeting that something is wrong. And people can't be that off-base by saying these things if they don't feel like there's something wrong. I'm proud to say that some of the folks have confided in me, and I would like to meet with those folks to see where we go with this. But if we want to place that commission in hiatus until something gets resolved, maybe, but I would never support the dissolution of this commission, because it's, it's just the wrong thing to do. Citizens, for 20 years prior to the time that the commission was formulated, worked very hard to, in fact, get to that point. And now for us to say, "Well, you know, it was an experiment that we didn't support very well, and we didn't work with it very well, so we're going to disband it and forget all the work you did," I think is an insult to the, to the citizenry. And I'm also proud to say that I'm going to be making, meeting with these folks, and I think they probably have a lot of good ideas, probably not all the answers, but certainly it's a talking place, and it's a place where we can bring some of that discussion forward, and maybe some citizens will step forward then, when they feel like they have a place to land that they would be proud to populate. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Councilor Harrison, Councilor Winter.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. One thing in terms of the going forward with the Police Oversight Commission, we do have some challenges, and also I agree with Councilor Gardino that the last thing you want to do for those people who really care about the problems within the police force or correcting some, whether you see them as, as minor issues or major issues, the last thing you want to do is, is remove or disband the Police Oversight Commission, because then everything just goes to the chief, and the chief is the final decision-maker. But that is one of the things that we have to look at very carefully, because that is in the collective bargaining agreement, I understand, right now, between the union and the city, is that I think both sides, at least at one point, wanted the Police Oversight Commission not to be able to have that sort of authority. So, I mean, if we go forward and we, we actually want to work with the police officers, and particularly the Albuquerque Police Officers Association and the, and the APOA and so forth, and the FOP, the Fraternal Order of Police, to actually change that provision in the bargaining, in the collective bargaining agreement, I mean, that's not going to be an easy conversation. And, and I think that we all have to be willing to, if we're all going to cross party lines and look at, at different types of approaches to handle this, I mean, that, that's one thing that has to be on the table with everything else. And now, I would say I'm a little bit surprised that people are, are suggesting that someone's in the military, the military experiences somehow contradicts ability to serve on this board very well. I think, in fact, that Councilor Gardino described Mr. Barker very well. He has a master's in counseling. He works with young people, he's head of the ROTC programs, JROTC programs at high schools. And also, some of the people who have unfortunately been killed, whether or not it's been justified or not, that's, that's not for us to decide, but some of these people who have been killed have perhaps suffered from PS, post-traumatic stress disorder due to their experience in the military. So having somebody who's in the military's act and someone who has a degree in counseling and somebody who works in high schools, I think, is the perfect person for this position. And, and I did have one, I did, was, was able to find two people to send up to the mayor, but there was one person who declined to, to be considered. And, and I think the city's darn lucky to have people who are on this list who are going to serve in this very difficult time and in this very difficult commission. And that's not taking away from the fact that we do have to, to look at this going forward and, and all be willing to, to consider making changes.
Councilor Winter, then Councilor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me tell you that I am working on major legislation that will look at the POC, what changes need to be made, and if the intent of what the POC is, and hopefully that will be out next week. We'll be glad to work with anybody who wants to work with that. In fact, I did talk... In fact, I did talk to one of the initial sponsors of the bill way, way back when, and I just kinda said, is the, you know, what was the intent of the POC when you started? Do we feel that we're still, we're still addressing what the intent of the POC was? And, and he gave me some good advice, gave me some things that, well, maybe not, but let me show, let you know how we got here. It's very interesting to see how they got to the bill, and it can be a really insight of what we want to do moving forward. So I'd love to work with anybody, but I think at this point, we need to really review the whole POC system, and I'm with a lot of you, I don't think that we should scrap it at this point. I think we ought to vote on members to put together and just try to see if we need to make it better, and I'm talking about working with all groups, not just the group that shows up here, but everybody to make it so it works with everybody. And, and you know, as far as members, I'm telling you, I put, I put, I think I got a very good member for this committee, and I did go out on our internet site to advertise it to everybody who wanted, this is open, it's a very important position, and you know what? We didn't get anybody. I did not get a soul. In fact, I ended up with two folks, and one I recruited, because he is a civilian guy, a neighborhood guy, but more than anything else, he's got lots of common sense, and so I think that he would be a, a good, a good member. But it's like, you know, we're all different up here. There's nine of us, we represent diff, different areas of the city, and, and our appointees are probably gonna be different, too, so we just gotta remember that, and, and being different's not bad, and, you know, it, just hopefully it all balances out that the common sense prevails. But I want to let you know that we are, I'm gonna work on that major legislation, just to review this, and I, I'm telling you, I don't want to take a long time to do this, I think up to three months, whatever way we go, that it's, we have it, we work it out, we take public input, and in three months, then maybe we'll have new legislation that will come forward. So that's my views. Thank you.
Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with, with a lot of what's been said about not disbanding it. If it needs to be fixed, we need to tweak it. And I know that Counsel Benton's chomping at the bit to, to say something real quick here about the military part of it. I, I was on the POC for four or five years, and I was military, happened to be in the military police, but it doesn't mean that you can't serve on the board. You serve your country, that's okay, but you can't serve on a commission and be fair, and, you know, they, they have some disciplines, but it doesn't mean that they're, they'll turn their other, turn their eye with the, if they see something wrong because they're police officers, it doesn't mean they're police lovers, they're disciplined people that can make a fair, a fair decision about what they're, what they're reading. But, but like, like something else that Counsel Benton said, too, I think it was, is they're getting a lot of grief, whether it's from people that come, and these people stand up here, and the testimony is, is powerful and heartfelt, and it's the same people that keep coming back, and it's a lot of anger, and I don't blame them for being angry, but I feel like we're letting the, the tail wag the dog by, everybody up here that was, had to say something about the police shootings, said, you need to disband, you need to disband. So they're very organized, and that's what they're coming at us with. It just needs to be fixed, and those, those, those volunteer people on the commission get no pay, and they get yelled at just as much as we do, from people that are not happy about things, and, and I, I do think they can do a good job if we just help them, if we just straighten it out. Thank you.
Counsel Benton.
Well, and, and I appreciate Counsel Cook, you, and, and any of our former military who, who are willing to serve on this, and I didn't mean to, to imply that that's, it's just something that jumped out at me, all right, that there is military discipline, and then there's city police departments, they're two very different things, and, and I'm sure, I don't see anything with any of these individuals that, that would disqualify them. I think, and I am not calling for disbanding of the POC. I guess where I'm coming from is, we've got three appointees before us tonight, are we being fair to them of, of letting them go forward and just entering the fray, if you will? And do the bills that, that I guess Counsel Winter, and our president, and Counsel Harris are looking at, do they address in any further detail the qualifications, or the, you know, somebody said something about, anyway, addressing the qualifications and the, the intent, I guess, of, of service on this commission? So that's what, that's what concerns me, maybe, I don't know if any of the sponsors of, of this proposed legislation want to speak to that. But that, that's my biggest concern with, with trying to, or just, again, moving forward, we're not disbanding the commission, but we're filling out these seats, and, and would there be anything different with how we go about this? If there one thing I would ask, is that maybe we be allowed to just send one name up to the mayor, to be honest with you, that's where I'm sitting right now, and, and I had a, I had a resignation, filled that, now this person's term is out, and I, I really feel like we need to, you know, I need to fill it with, well, well, because of redistricting, I need to fill it with a person from, from the new District Three, so that's a non-issue, but it's been very difficult, and, so, so those are my concerns, and I don't, I don't want to overemphasize the business about a military background of members, but that was just something that, that seemed really clear with each of the appointees, there was a connection to the military. Thank you.
So we're on EC 313, this is an appointment to the Police Oversight Commission, we pulled this off the consent agenda, and we're gonna see it with the other two that are on approvals. Counselor Guardunio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And also, I think there actually is some language in the ordinance that talks about whether or not a police officer can serve, or a retired police officer can serve. So I think that has been broached already. Now, to what extent, I don't know, and do we continue that and go further into that? I don't know that either. But one of the things that I would like to ask this council, if I could be obliged or humored, until I meet with some of the folks, and I invite anyone on this day to join me for a public forum, I think it is really important to hear from folks, not only that have been affected as the folks here, but anyone that wants to discuss this in a larger sense, and so they don't feel like they have only two minutes to present their position, or their concern, or what solutions they may have. We have never asked them, what do you think would be a good solution? We have just let them speak for two minutes, and that was pretty much it. So that's one thing. And the other thing is, it's perception. If we put folks in to a commission, you know, if nothing but developers are in the Development Commission, that would be kinda weird, I would think, and I would hope that we wouldn't do that, and that we would have a broader base. That's all, I think that's being asked. Not that military folks or retired police be banned from ever serving, but rather than the community feel comfortable with who's on that commission, so that they feel that there's a fair, you know, decision made. That's all.
I think it's fair enough, Counsel Guardunio, and I would support a, you know, a public forum, I think that's something, I think, sounds like a, pretty much a consensus here to do that, and a study session. I think, I think all these options and things, I think we're open to, I certainly am, and I think it's certainly needed.
And I wouldn't mind both, but I would ask that we not make it a study session only, because that would keep the public from being part of it.
I'm gonna let Counsel Winter go first, we do have several other counselors that want to speak, and we also have some public comment also. Counsel Winter.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think Counsel Guardunio, I think that that has, that, that's part of the legislation to take public input at a couple hearings, kinda like what we used, we did on some of the other high-profile issues years and years ago, we haven't done it in a while, so that would be part of it. The other thing is, I would really like to vote on my person, because for one thing, I, I believe in him, but I think he would make the commission better, and so I think with him there, he would make it better, so I would hope to have the opportunity to, to, to vote on my person.
Counsel Sanchez, and then Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am very pleased that Counsel Winter will be bringing some legislation forward. If we do not reform or transform the POC and its current structure, nothing will ever be done. I mean, we had the review where we paid $35,000 to MGT of America, and recommendations were made. We've not implemented any of those recommendations, and I feel bad for anybody that wants to serve on this board under its current structure, because it's flawed, it's broken, and it needs to be reformed. So I'd like to see the legislation that's coming forward, but I would also like, if there's anybody from the public that would like to give input to us to do so, so I think it's important that we get input from the public, and what they'd like to see the Police Oversight Commission look like. Again, I think it's important that we do not disband the POC, I think it's an important component of the City of Albuquerque, but at the same time, if we do not change it, I think we're gonna be in the same situation today as we will be a year from now. So I'm very pleased to see that we're seeing, you know, looking at some reform coming in.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and then we'll stop belaboring this issue and hopefully vote. My potential POC member is very well aware of the contentious situation on the POC, he is willing to serve, and more importantly, I believe he brings a good, steady analytical mind, and, and I'm hoping, as does Counsel Winter, that my appointee will in fact make things work better, but I am certainly not opposed, and would welcome revisiting the POC and trying to make it better.
Do we need a motion on this, this bill, EC 313?
I'll, I'll move approval of EC 13, 313.
Public comment?
Counsel, oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Winter, then we do have several public comments, and I, that was my mistake. Counsel Winter.
Mr. President, and Major Barker is an APS employee, and I'm an APS employee, so I want to recuse myself, because I really don't feel comfortable voting on this issue.
Okay, then, under, Valdez is our one speaker on all three, and you, would you like to, to speak on all, but we'll speak on this bill, and you're, and you're welcome to come up with the other ones also. Mr. Valdez.
I wish Counseler Winter had not left. He mistakenly seems to think that the people that come here to, to the council to present information and their concerns about, on police, and the police chief and stuff, are all one group. That's not true. There are several groups here, and it, the, the commonality of the groups is, yes, we are, are all human and civil rights groups. You have the Dr. Martin Luther King Task Force, they're a whole coalition of themselves. You have New Mexico Vincenos United, that's different from MLK group. You have, you have this Cop Watch group, and then you have individuals like Eli Chavez that is, is not, doesn't belong to any groups. So when you, when you're hit with this barrage, it's not by one group, it's by the, for, for the most part, the, the human and civil rights community. And, and I might add, please don't, oh, first of all, I need to say, the, the groups here that speak to you, I really don't think they want the Police Oversight Commission disbanded. They're, they're speaking out of desperation and out of frustration. I think what they really want is, is for you to put the Police Oversight Commission on hold till we, till we fix it, and you're right, Counselor Guardunio, it should not be disbanded. We worked too hard to put it together, and, and while the commission has all of these flaws and stuff, we still need citizen oversight of police, and the purpose of the commission was put in there to protect citizens from police misconduct, if, if I might just add, that, that we need people in there that really know what human and civil rights are about, and not just highly, highly qualified military persons. There's something really wrong with the makeup of the Police Oversight Commission, and how people on that commission think we don't need more of the same. Thank you.
Thank you. So there's a motion and a second for EC 313. The other discussion, Counsel Harris.
I just wanted to say, I would like, Mr. Barker affirmed, also, he has pneumonia, he'd like to be here tonight, he can't, he's willing to take our phone call if anyone wants to.
Motion and a second for approval of EC 313, those in favor say yes, those opposed no. Motion passes, and we will jump down to item B and C. Item B is EC 334, and this is the mayor's appointment of Jeffrey Peterson to the Police Oversight Commission. Counsel Winter wants to move confirmation. And I'll second motion and a second for confirmation of EC 334.
Thank you. Just real quick about Mr. Peterson, he's been a neighborhood guy for a long, long time, he's worked, he's a currently president of his Neighborhood Association, he's also been president of Coalition Four, he works for a contractor, he's a civil engineer, and he, and he has worked out at Kirtland Air Force Base as a contractor for a long, long time. And it's really interesting, one of the questions I know that came up, that he, we shouldn't support him, because he works with an anti-tourism task force, well, what he does is, is a civil engineer, he works with paving and protecting buildings, so that's, the way I understand it, is what he's part of this task force, he protects buildings, and so that's what he does, and he's really, I'm talking about just a great common sense guy, and so I think he will make a great addition to the POC, so I urge your support.
And Mr. Valdez, you were assigned to speak on this, but I gave you a little more time on the earlier one, but you're welcome to, you're welcome to speak on this, too.
You know, again, I think the, the persons that are being asked to sit on this commission are highly qualified, but are they highly, highly qualified on human and civil rights? What does a civil engineer know about human and civil rights? As a matter of fact, because the commission was created to protect citizens of police misconduct and police shootings and the like, doesn't it make a bit of sense that one of the prerequisites, and one of the standards for anybody to sit on the Police Oversight Commission, that they ought to have some human and civil rights background? Seems to me they ought to have two years of human and civil rights advocacy to really qualify. You know, Counselor Harris's appointment, you know, he seems qualified, but what does he know about human and civil rights? And, and again, I ask the commission to seriously consider not to put people in this commission until we fix it. I mean, when the yell said, you know, it's broken, are we doing these people a disservice by putting them in a commission that's broken? I, I think you are doing these poor guys a disservice. So again, I think in fixing the commission, and we ought to start since now, is considering different standards for who sits on that commission, and they really should know human and civil rights if they stand a chance of protecting the citizens of misconduct and abuse by the police department. Thank you.
Other questions and comments? There's been a motion and a second for confirmation of EC 334, those in favor say yes, those opposed no. Motion passes, brings us to item C. Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move approval of EC 336, this is appointment of Dr. Carl Foster to the Police Oversight Commission. Thank you. And if I may, before I close, I would just like to say that this person is, again, an academic, he has a varied background, he does have a doctor's degree in education, and I do have one thing to say about the comment that the members of this commission should only be citizens with civil rights, so, with human and civil rights experience. I think a lot of us have experience in that, but I don't believe we want to profile in that area and say that only the people who can serve on this commission have, in fact, experience or education or training, because I do believe we offer some training in that, but I don't believe we want to profile in any area on the members of this commission, because it cannot truly be a citizens' representative commission if we profile in any way, so I urge your support for Dr. Foster for the POC.
Counsel Benton, then Counsel Guardunio.
I will support the, the appointment. I just want to say quickly about these people who are willing to serve, and, and again, about services in the military, and, and then coming forward, you know, to serve in, in our city, no matter what a person's background, especially on a commission like this, that is very demanding of people's time, we have to appreciate that. And, and I appreciate those who have served through my appointments. I, I did want to say something quickly about, because some of the public, public testimony about Mr. Shine, and I wanted to make clear that, that Mr. Shine apologized and, and said that he made a mistake, and, and subsequent to that, there was a censure, and then the censure was revoked, and
I don't know where it stands right now. But I think when people are, are willing to publicly say, I made a mistake, that, that, you know, we should accept that. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I think that was clearly, you know, the, the sense that I got too, you know, from the commissioners there that, hey, we, we didn't do that right. You know, we, we could have done that differently. And I, and I think, you know, conversations with the counselors and those commissioners and I think, you know, these are volunteers and, and we all make mistakes and, and so, but, you know, these are good people that are, that are working hard. And I would say before, you know, Counsel Guardunio, just one other comment that I, I would, and I just want to encourage it, you know, certainly our staff and ask our staff to work with us to make sure that we come away from, from this issue, before we leave this issue tonight, that we would, we would work this week and, you know, very, very quickly, we'd get to work on some actionable steps that we could put in place so we don't just kind of let this, too much room, you know, get in between this meeting and some, some real specific actionable steps on the public forums as well as the, the ideas on pieces of, of policy and legislation that would really, really seriously fix and revamp, you know, this, this commission here. So if we could, that would be my request, that, that we, that we, that we work on this right away. Counsel Guardunio.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to speak to the whole idea of whether someone is qualified or not. I don't know that anyone is asking that someone has a doctorate in civil rights. That's not the point. I think what's being asked is that persons serving in that commission have an overall sense, an overall understanding of what civil rights are, what human rights are, that kind of background. That said, I don't think anyone should be excluded, but they should be included more so if they have that sensibility, if they have that sense of what the community is made up of and that they represent the community, not just the counselor's idea of what a person would be like on that commission. I think that Dr. Cameron, who was my appointee, has that breadth of experience. He and I are not buddies in the sense that we hang out. I just thought that he would be a great person to serve and have attended many of his sermons and that was instructive for me to know that he has done that kind of work and has that kind of background. And I want to go back to perception. I think if we have folks who have, whatever it is that makes the public feel like they're not being represented in a certain way or not being fairly allowed to, to be part of the process, that we will have, not unlike what some people have said, some distrust of the process, of the commission and of us as individuals. So I think that's what's being asked and I hope that the public forum and other ways of addressing these concerns we have get discussed in a real meaningful way and don't dismiss the fact that folks are here every meeting as if, not only they don't have the right, but that it's redundant and we've heard it and, you know, I just don't think that's the kind of message we want to send, or at least I don't, to folks who present any position in front of us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Valdez, you're signed up to speak on this. Would you like to speak?
Regarding the qualifications police oversight commissioners should have, you know, if, if you look at the makeup of the current Police Oversight Commission and how they justify every, every single shooting, how they didn't even bother to look at the Levi Chavez shooting of, of his wife, how they came up with excuses, how, well, we didn't get that case till years later, and how commissioners purposely skew their rules. I mean, they could have looked at that shooting if they wanted to, but they didn't and they did it intentionally and they did it purposely. Now, Counselor Cook, when you were sitting on the commission, how many shootings were justified? All of them? Counselor Cook, when you were sitting on the commission, how many excessive use force, force cases were justified? All of them? I think so. Counselor Cook, you were law enforcement. I think it was apparent that you were on the side of law enforcement and that you were against human and civil rights. I think that was apparent when you sat on the commission. I think it's apparent that every, well, I'm not going to say all of them, but almost every single commissioner supports everything law enforcement does. I'm not, and, and we're saying, hey, we have a lot of good police officers. There's a lot of good work being, being done by good cops in this city, but the human and civil rights violations has got to stop and 50% of the problem of the Police Oversight Commission is its makeup. Please, when you look at this commission, first of all, the commission was created by Citizens Ad Hoc Committee made up of Vincenzo's United, several other groups, ACLU and things like that. So that was the creation of the Police Oversight Commission. And please consider what we're saying. Thank you.
There's been a motion and a second for EC 336. Any other questions or discussion? And I, just one real quick comment is that I do, you know, my appointee will come off, I believe, in February and I, and I'm, and I'm just not going to appoint anybody else or recommend anybody else until we really get this figured out and get some final decision on how we're going to really, really fix this, fix this commission and do this right. So, you know, when that comes up, I mean, at that point, I think we wait and we, and we make this, we make it right. So a motion and a second on EC 336. Those in favor, say yes. Those opposed, no. Motion passes and it brings us back to-